Indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you. Okay, we have one item of all business and then an executive session. So I'd like to tee us up to prepare for the discussion of the the building committee. So our role with regard to the building committee is in Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen A. The committee may appoint a school building committee which shall have such powers and duties relative to the construction, reconstruction, remodeling, repair, expansion, or equipping of school buildings or facilities as the committee determines. So the work of this committee is guided by the MSBA modules. The school committee can make rules that govern the operation of the building committee, such as rules of order, operational procedures, selection of the chair, and determining of voting and non-voting members, and also the size of the committee. So our first order of business will be to determine the size of the committee. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge some concerns that MSBA raised with Brooke. And then in the conversation with Tom Ryan, the select board chair in Stowe was sort of dovetailed, and it had nothing to do with us. None of us were on the committee. Brooke wasn't here, but it is relative to the center school building project. And Brooke and I were both somewhat amazed when this came up, that there had been concerns raised about that project. And so because of that, the MSBA was kind of keeping an eye on this region. So we're like, what's that all about? And then I had a conversation with Tom Ryan, and he filled me in. I didn't know, he just sort of talked about the little apprehension on their part, but based on what happened with the project. And I think it predates Brooke. It was a former administration, and again, none of us were on the committee at the time. But I guess there was a problem getting information from the committee for the town, for the town of Stowe to actually get the information they requested from the committee, actually getting that. And so I have an understanding, a context for that, so I understand it. And, you know, I assured him that we would take this responsibility seriously, and there will be some channels of communication and lines of authority to address those things should any concerns arise. So let me see. Let's see. So tonight, like I said, I'd like to start with the size of the committee, and then go on to membership. Brooke is going to be our guide through this. It is our decision about the size. And there were requirements by statute of certain roles that we have to fill on it. Brooke can talk a little bit about that. And then we'll have a discussion on membership. So I see that there's probably going to be two motions. One about size, and one about membership. So my role is going to do the best I can to listen and take notes so that I can summarize where I think we are. And, oh, and so what I'm going to do after Brooke speaks is I'm going to recognize individuals and give them an opportunity to give their thoughts, opinions about the size of the committee, and go around and then see if anybody else has anything they want to add, and then look at what some of the patterns are. So that's kind of my plan. Hi, Steve. Okay. So Brooke, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure. So just a couple of quick thoughts and some reflections from my perspective, as I knew we were going into the meeting today. I had sent around just two real kind of graphs, if you will, about potential for a committee. I mean, you can look at a committee of nine to fourteen, or you can look at a committee of, you know, twenty-five or thirty. Or really, this really depends on the pathway that this particular school committee would like to take. And, you know, you can take a look at those options, or you can throw all of that away and start with a clean slate and say, okay, so what does this look like? Now, if you take a look at the matrices that, you know, you could find the matrix online, of course, under MSBA. It's kind of like a blank slate. And then we were just playing with different ideas, and that's what I sent around to you the other day. Now, a couple of these are kind of positions are in stone, right? So for example, the first one, the SBC, SBC member who is MCPBO certified, that's an automatic, that has to be Pat Maroni. Because she is our MCPBO certified member for the district. The money, the funds will flow through her office. So it's clear that that's an obvious. The local chief executive officer and the superintendent of schools are generally one in the same unless you're looking at some different type of configuration other than a public school district, right? So if this has got nothing to do with public schools, it's this, you know, some other type of function that MSBA is looking, or organization is looking to fund. Sometimes those positions are completely different positions, but in our case, those positions are one in the same. So, you know, whoever is your local chief executive officer is your superintendent, and of course, your superintendent is your superintendent. So those positions are kind of filled as such. Then you have some question marks that there are positions that you're going to want to think about. So the one is the first one that says administrator or manager. One says school committee member. Then if you take a look, local official responsible for building maintenance, that's really your director of facilities. And so for us, that would be Rob, Rob Freeswick. The next is representative of office authorized by law to construct school buildings. When we took a look back and I talked to MSB about this, they encouraged that, you know, if we had a school committee member that could fill that slate, that would make sense to us. So something to think about on that one. So you could literally have, you know, a school committee member where it says school committee member, and another school committee member where it's got representative of office authorized by law to construct school buildings. Then the school principal is an obvious. Whoever ends up being the school principal during this interim, of course, it's going to be Steve, so he would be the automatic. You know, depending on the search that we undertake, depending on who comes out of that, would be the automatic process on that. The member knowledgeable in educational mission and function of facility. We've had a team that has been working all last year on some of the paperwork that is due at the end of this month. So it would make sense that those would be teachers and people that are already involved in the process. So we've got a couple. For example, Martina Kenyon is actively involved in this. Kim Early has been actively involved in this. So we've got teachers on that staff that would make sense that we have the through line with them. So, and they're all willing to sit on it. The local budget official or member of local finance committee, again, that's an empty slot for you to think about and to consider. I did mention to you that the town of Stowe FinCom member had certainly agreed that, you know, depending on where this meeting goes and any others that you have on this, he'd be willing to put his name forward. Then you've got members of community with, that the MSBA is saying to us, and that was the note that I sent out looking to recruit parents, for example, who have architecture, engineering, and/or construction experience. So that's a slot to be filled, but I have a number of people from each community. So it would be easy for me to fill that with three, or six, or however many people you decide you would like to have on there. And then it's got an optional category. Now, I'd filled in an individual's name on that, on two of the options that I put forward, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's, that person has to stay on there. You may, for example, want to put a third school committee member in that slot. You could also, and I know one of you had said, I know that this is what MSBA is looking for, members of the community with architectural, engineering, and/or construction experience. But what about people that are just really passionate about the project? And maybe you don't have that kind of experience, but parents that really are invested and want to be a part of that. You may want to put some parents on there, you know, in that particular category as well, if you'd like to. I think at the very least, you know, I would really encourage, like, there were four of you who had expressed interest in sitting on this committee. And I think the fourth member had said, you know, but I would acquiesce to, you know, the other member of my community who was offered to go forward with it. So, you know, we can easily fill the three school committee slots, and then you have one from each community. And I think that that's a really good idea, if that's a route that you want to take, rather than just having one single school committee member. And I think as we're a regional school district, I think that that would be something to consider. I think the other thing that you want to really think about too is that this is, this committee represents the whole, right? It doesn't, you are a representative of your community, but you are really advocating for the whole. You're not just advocating for your community, whatever the community's wishes are, whatever, your role is to advocate for the whole. So those are just some thoughts that I've, you know, been playing with in my mind this weekend as we come close to this. At the end of all of this too, I think the other thing that you want to think about is the voting, who votes and who doesn't. I think too, and I would say this upfront, I think it's really important, from my lens, that you have community members on here. I think that that's really important, the parents that are in our community that are invested in this because their children are coming through the ranks. I think that, I think that that's really important. I know that MSBA has basic slots, if you will, for school district personnel, and I understand and I appreciate that. But that doesn't mean that we necessarily have to have voting privileges, for example. You know, you may want to say, and again, it's completely up to you, however you want to do this. But there's nothing in here that says the superintendent should have a vote, or the director of facilities, or the school, you know, the school teachers and school principal. So that's kind of, that is totally up to you. So I think tonight, what we're really hoping for is that we can kind of get an idea of the size. And then, you know, I know I've had parents reach out saying, you know, do I know if I'm on it yet? And I'm saying, just hang tight, because I don't know how big this is going to be and/or how small. So I really need to know the direction that you're going to send me in tonight as to how many slots I fill here and who fills these. I know that from my lens too, I think that, you know, in my role as superintendent, you know, a huge piece was to try to get us to this point. I think now it's kind of like, can we get over to you and say, okay, we're here now. This is your role now to pick this up and say, okay. Because this building does not belong to any employee of the municipality or the school district. This project belongs to the three communities. And I really want to make sure that those are the voices that are at the table from my perspective. You know, I'm not sure what your perspective will be, but that would be my perspective. So I just offer that up, Kathy, as kind of a broad overview. And I think it's really important to hear from everyone tonight.
Absolutely. So I want to, before we dig in, I want to thank Leah, who did some super sleuthing for us and found some regional school districts that have recently had building projects. Mount Greylock, Nauset, Manchester Essex, North Middlesex, and Concord Carlisle. And Mount Greylock had sixteen people on their committee. Nauset had eighteen. Manchester Essex had thirty-six. North Middlesex, eight. And Concord Carlisle had twenty-five. Also interesting was the mix. I can't remember which one, but one of them had a lot of teachers and very few parents. Another one had a lot of parents or community members and very few teachers. So it really is a mixed bag, and as Brooke said, it's for us to determine. So if, I want to see if anybody has any questions before we begin. But if there are no questions, I'd really like to go around and see where folks are. Are there any questions before we begin? Leah?
Is there any way that we could project? Maybe not, but project the template of the minimum requirements?
I don't know whether Elida would be able to pull that up quickly or not from the MSBA website. I'm not sure whether she's, she'd be able to do that or not. So I would suggest that we start discussion now. Because, again, you kind of, you already have a general idea of those positions that we need to fill.
You'll keep us on that.
I need to be able to see everybody. And when there's something up, it minimizes. So I apologize. I actually printed out Brooke's templates. And I don't know if you have an iPhone or an iPad that you're not using. That's an option too. But we'll do, Brooke, you can keep us on track when we get to that point. Is that okay, Leah? All right. Any other questions before we begin? So I'm going to start, I usually go in alphabetical order, but I'm going to do reverse alphabetical order. So Leah, that means you get to go first. So your thoughts about size of the committee?
Yeah, so in just doing some, you know, as much research as I could, I actually had to call Concord Carlisle because they've taken all of their stuff down because their building's five years old now. And so she wouldn't give me the names, but she gave me all the positions. And so just from looking at the various regional projects that have gone on in the last five years, it seems to me a couple of things. Thing one is that taxpayers are the voting members. So I think that that's a decent rule to go by. I think also that, not that school employees shouldn't have a vote. I'm not against that. But, or like town employees, but generally speaking, I like the idea of taxpayers being the deciders. I also found that towns were all represented. And so making sure that there is parity across the towns to the best extent possible is important to me. I also think that having community members who have construction, engineering, and architecture experience is critical. And I'm not totally sure if having citizens or residents who don't have that experience is a good use of the few seats that we have, knowing how many really talented professionals, construction professionals we have in our three towns. The last thing that I'll say is that size is a concern for me. So I worry about the committee being too big. So in looking at the various committees, I felt like twenty was as high as we would ever want to go. And, you know, hopefully bringing it below that if we can.
So with, I noted your other things for the next part. So I've got those notes down. I'll still give you an opportunity to contribute during that portion. But with regard to size, you're looking at a committee not to exceed twenty. What about a minimum? Just, are you just more concerned that it not exceed twenty?
Yeah, I mean, I felt like fifteen was getting toward the low end, just to fit all of the various stakeholders.
Okay. Brooke, did you want to make a comment?
Just super quick. To be clear, I really think that you need at least the three members of communities with the engineering, architectural. That has to be, that has to happen. And you have that right now, in terms of people who sent things into me. So I'm not worried that we're not going to. The only way you could do the other and to add is underneath that last category. So I want to be really clear on that. You definitely need, have three parents that have some architectural, engineering, or construction experience. That's given.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Elaine?
Sure. So I think, so my main goal for this committee is for the committee to be able to work out all of the issues that could come up amongst themselves, so that by the time this gets to a vote at town meeting, where the, like, literally the broad community is involved, those trade-offs or compromises, or they've worked through all that stuff. So I think that the committee does need to be as representative of the, all the different constituencies in our communities as possible. So I am willing to let it get a little bit bigger of like, maybe twenty-four. But I don't necessarily think all of those people should be voting members. I would probably go down maybe even to a dozen people as a minimum. I haven't really worked out what that looks like with the required spots and optional spots. But just sort of in my mind, that's what I would think of. Yeah, because I also think that when you have sort of redundancies in someone's perspective, so it would be great to have construction professionals from Stowe, Bolton, and Lancaster. But generally speaking, they're all construction professionals. So I would look at the voting membership and want that to be fairly balanced so that no one perspective is more important than another. You know, or more spoken for, more biased towards it, that kind of thing.
Okay. So in terms of size, a minimum of twelve and not to exceed twenty-four.
Yes, I have a much wider band than what Leah said.
But you're in the ballpark.
Yeah.
Okay. So Steve?
Okay, I agree with Leah that we should keep the committee members, whether they're voting or non-voting, to a minimum number. Whether that is fifteen, whether that is twenty, we'll see how we later decide how to spread that out. I think there should be no politicians on the committee. And I think there should be at least one representative from each of the towns in the parental skilled background area to give parity. Architectural, engineering, construction. I'm not necessarily unsure, or actually, I would think that we would also want somebody who had technology background because this is a high school that is hopefully going to go for the next fifty years. And we need someone not only who is currently well-versed in the type of technology that is A, available, and B, makes sense, but also who may have a vision of what can happen in the future. I just read an article on the most up-to-date, cutting-edge airport that was designed for Germany. And it's now something like twelve years behind. And eight, four billion dollars over budget, and doesn't have things. They had to re-engineer it to put in things like automatic check-in because no one thought of that when they were originally doing the planning. So I think we really need someone who has that kind of background as well. Those basically four, let's call them skilled trade positions, can certainly be spread across the towns. I think there should be one representative from perhaps the three-town governments. I don't think we need to have all three towns represented because this is going to be a three-town decision that will ultimately be made. And we don't, and we don't, I don't think we need that kind of, I'll say it, interference on the committee. And once again, I think we need to keep the numbers of people on the committee at a minimum while spreading it out in the matrix of skilled trades, towns, and constituencies. And I also believe we should strictly have, there should be teachers on there, people who have specifically, or maybe that's handled by our educational people out of the administration, who have a forward, once again, a forward view of what education may be like. And we can't, we're never going to figure it out for fifty years, but maybe over the next five years to ten years, some of the things that are out there would be well-versed in making sure that their input for facilities, for technology, for methodologies are considered as we move forward into the design phase of this. And let's remember that ultimately, we're going to be hiring design consultants for this project. But we need some people who A, will understand what they say, and will be able to reinterpret what they say back to the three towns. That's it.
Thank you, Steve. Sharon?
I think Elaine and Steve and Leah have covered a lot of things. I was thinking about a couple of things that I might reiterate or highlight. I think that it is really, really important that we, that the group of people who are chosen for this project are committed to being a part of a team and working together as a team. I think that, I agree that there's a need for a passionate community member. I think everybody that has volunteered to be a part of this is passionate about the project. Otherwise, I don't think that you would volunteer. And I just am questioning, Brooke had said about employees not voting, or, you know, voting or not voting. My thought around that would be that the employees that are on the committee are the people who are in the building right now. They know schools. They know education. And so I think that their voices are important, even though they may not necessarily be here for the long haul. Their voices are important because they have an inside knowledge of how the system works. And I think that that is really a very important part as well.
So in terms of size, Sharon, we right now have a low of twelve and a high of twenty-four as our ballpark right now. So you're?
I would not advocate for a higher number. I think twelve might be a little bit too small, but I'm more concerned about having too many voices than too few.
Okay. So can you give me a number, just?
Fifteen.
Okay. Thanks. Mary? There you are. Okay.
So I do agree with not wanting the committee to be too large. When we think of group dynamics, we know that a smaller group has more ability to really connect with each other, develop relationships, and get things done. We also know that to have a committee that is representative, we'll need it to be a little larger. And one of the things that we do on school committee, and I've witnessed in other groups, is that when you have subcommittees, some of the getting into the weeds, research, finding out opinions, et cetera, and coming up with subcommittee reports can inform the whole committee. So whereas I don't want anything over twenty, as I keep counting through this, I come up with, you know, seventeen to twenty at least. I think there is more burden. I mean, there are benefits to having a smaller group. But there is also more burden and responsibility on the shoulders of every single person in the small group. Certainly, we don't want anyone to get sick, or we don't want all those types of things. But if you have enough people, you'll have, if you have a large meet, you know, if you have the whole group together, you'll have enough people to be able to conduct it, and you'll have a quorum. I keep counting the people that Brooke has brought us through who will necessarily be on there. And so I, you know, I count them, and then I get to like local budget officials. And what an important role that is. And I, you know, if we had two people, two local, from different towns, because one of the thrusts, and I've already heard this from other community, school committee members, is that we have parity, that we have each town represented. So I don't know, three would seem a lot, but perhaps. The members of the community, I think it's very important to have, as everyone has said, those people who are especially knowledgeable in engineering and architecture. And as Steve said, you know, let's think about technology too. I also think that this is a place for three more parents who have, because as taxpayers, they are vitally important to this process. And they also, although we don't have students on this, those parents will be, I would think, representing their students and talking to their own children. And so we get more student voice through that. And I do, with Steve, think that we should have either, either a TA or a select person from town administrator or a select person from each of the three towns. Now, I know that what had, one of the models that we've heard about before was every single category would be multiplied times three. And there we go, where, you know, we're twenty-five, thirty. We're way beyond, where I think it's reasonable. However, I do think we want to look for parity and make sure that each one of these wonderful three towns is represented. So either, you know, town administrator or a selectman from each of the three towns. And this is still, you know, I look back and I think about both Martina and Kim, and, you know, I'm putting, I was putting both of them in, and still coming in under twenty. So that's where I am.
Thank you. Let me just interject at this point about the fact that as we go through the different models and the different phases of the project, if it's accepted, that there is the building committee. that there is the building committee and then um typically um other groups, focus groups, subcommittees, that are brought together to weigh in on any number of things. Furniture. I mean, these are the things that come to my mind because because they do, furniture, colors, fabric, things like that, but I'm sure the other systems as well, uh the HVAC, some mechanical systems. So aside from having a position on the building committee, there are opportunities for people to give input. That's that's all I wanted to add. Um Mike?
Uh I don't want to um take too much time going over all the finer points of what I agree with. I mean, much of what I've heard, I I agree with. I'll just sort of um touch on maybe some more specificity. I I I do agree with Mary about, uh and 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 Leah in particular, about parity among the towns, and I feel like with the option of allowing a a representative member um from each town to have uh a TA, a um uh perhaps a select person and a member from the FinCom, it's almost like, okay, well, if if Stowe offers one of these positions, then Lancaster and Bolton uh have their choice of the remaining positions. Uh I think that when you offer all three towns to have representatives for the same role, I think obviously, the the tendency is for the the committee to get bloated. Um and I I I feel like that would uh potentially stifle progress. Um it could. Um I I think it was Mary who also said that um she wanted to see um educators. Um particularly those, uh uh or maybe it was Steve, I'm sorry if I if I if I'm not remembering correctly, but uh educators with direct and significant experience in the classroom. Um maybe because they're not uh community members, maybe they don't have voting status, but I would I would wanna have that input uh in terms of best practices and sort of a wish list. Um I would, I would advise um including some kind of technology professional that would advise um the district on current limitations and um solutions and as well as projected solutions for anticipated problems as technology evolves and grows. How we can leave um uh I would call it virtual space to kind of grow into, um what needs to be considered. I know that there are um opportunities for subcommittees, but I agree that there would also need, we would need to get some some significant feedback from students. What what is their experience, wha- what works well, what doesn't work well? Um uh a- again, it it doesn't need to be in a position of having a voting status, but certainly we would want to solicit feedback from our learners um from a variety of levels. Um and then finally, I think, I think um I'd like to float the idea out of maybe having um a moderator uh potentially with non-voting status, just to sort of manage um these, the committee that 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 could exceed somewhere around twenty to twenty-five members. Um I like the idea of having someone that is able to manage such large numbers. That's all I have.
Okay, so um I know I keep coming back to a number, but uh so what's your ballpark and when you see a a viable committee size, Mike?
So I would say probably anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five. I don't think it should get too much larger than that and um you know, I I can't see it getting too much lower than fifteen without sacrificing some of that parity that I think is important.
Okay, thank you. Um Joseph?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um in regards to the makeup of the committee, I don't have any opinion in this regard. Uh the only comment I would have is that uh in my prior school committee existence, we did go through a building project and if memory serves, we had probably a a medium-sized committee of around fifteen to nineteen people uh from our community. Um what I can share from you from that experience was that I learned probably the most important thing about a school building project is, as far as community is concerned, it needs to come in on time and on budget. And I'm gonna be biased in my assessment here, but the one thing that we did find that we needed probably more so than just people who have engineering and design background is, and I'm, I know I'm gonna be biased when I say this, but we actually needed some legal assistance on that committee as well. Uh we did have some issues and we did have to hire a clerk of the works eventually, so um I I liked the idea of the medium-sized committee, fifteen to nineteen. Call me crazy, I like an odd number because if there's gonna be a vote, you wanna have it be able to, you know, not have a tie. And uh uh maybe somebody who has got some uh uh construction, uh legal construction background and what have you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Joseph. Um I'm gonna call on Rich last for his request. Brett, what are your thoughts?
Size, fifteen to twenty range, sounds pretty good. All three towns represented equally. I I think, you know, if you if you short-change somebody, you could have some problems. I like Stephen's idea of of adding technology. You know, it's a, that can't be overlooked. Pretty important going forward. On that, I I hi- how do you add to what's already been said?
Okay, thanks. All right. Um Amy?
Thank you. Um I think what had, what is most important to me has already been stated by many members of the committee. I think you know, we need to make sure that there's parity among the towns um in as many of the categories as we can without making the committee unmanageable. And when I go through those categories and try to count up the um how to achieve that goal without it getting too big, I, you know, I really can't see the committee getting less than fifteen people and still being able to hit on filling a, checking the box for um for each type of category. And I like uh Mike's idea. I had been thinking the same thing, listening to everybody talk where as long as um if we could offer the town government positions that check different boxes rather than having all three town administrators and all, you know, a selectman from each town or a finance person from each town. Um I think that might be a good way to get to that parity without adding too many people to the committee. And I I hope, I I see everybody, I see Brooke and Kathy taking notes, but um you know, they're in this optional category, I've heard a few ideas of people we could reach out to, so I'm hoping that those could be non-voting contributors to the process, like students, um a technology expert, maybe a legal expert, like Joe said, just make sure that we're not gonna be getting ourselves into any kind of trouble um with something we don't anticipate. And teachers for sure, you know, just make sure that they're living the the building, you know, teaching inside the old building every day, and I'm sure that their input is beyond invaluable, so.
Thank you. Rich, you're on.
Thank you. Uh so I I generally agree with everybody. So when I kinda mapped out my my ideal committee, I came up with, I I generally like to go to the to the model of like one pizza. It is like a good, good uh good amount of people, you know, if you can get one pizza. Um so I was originally thinking about seven people. Um and these are voting members. Um and then I looked at our committee and I thought that was a pretty good model, right? We got eleven people. Um and there is a method to the madness of why there's eleven people. It's an odd number like Joe talked about. So if I was gonna advocate for um for eleven folks and have have it reflect the composition of the committee, for for Lancaster reps, for Stowe reps, three Bolton reps, for the um for the uh the voting part about the committee, then if you add in Brooke, Steve, um and um and the other folks, I ended up with uh nineteen or twenty. So I I would advocate for a size of of eleven and that you have nine non-voting members.
Okay, so um I am in um agreement with this sort of ballpark size and not to exceed twenty-five. I think a minimum of fifteen, fifteen to twenty-five-ish um from from my point of view. Um I know that we were gonna, you know, I I had wireless to sort of do one and the other, but I I took notes on everything else everyone said. For me, the most important thing is making sure that um the educational program and educational programs related to social emotional learning, um extracurricular activities, the whole child approach to what makes a good high school is going to be important in the design of this. And having been on two building projects in this district, what I found sometimes is that that the the concept of program ju- driving design um did not um stick or resonate with with many members of of the committees, and these committees were small. I think Brooke, what did you say? One was nine and one was twelve or something? They were they were small. And now granted, it was, you know, twenty-plus years ago, but that's what's the most in- important thing from my point of view. Also the fact that the school committee quote-unquote owns this and can keep things focused in in that regard, bringing in everything else. I agree that uh with the idea who the chair is, um um can can participate fully. It's hard to manage and participate. Um but I would also like to see the chair of this committee be someone from the school committee. So I agree with this, the concept that um of of parity and um whether it's parents or um um town administrators or TAs, teachers, all of that. Um so um that's, that's all I got. So um we have, I wanna go over what was said um relative to um membership. Um but I'm wondering what people think about this idea of saying that we have a minimum and a not-to-exceed number on the committee. So um what I would like to do is just go around and ask folks what they think about having a minimum, I have a range, a minimum and a not-to-exceed. And just looking at the notes, it seems the bare minimum that folks would be comfortable with is um fifteen and the 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 not-to-exceed amount would be between um twenty and and twenty-five. So um Steve, I saw your hand. I'll get around to everybody, but Steve, your thoughts?
Okay, once again, um having been to a couple of the MASC uh annual meetings, there are and we're and I am have absolutely no doubt that we will be um contracting with a design firm as well as a construction company. And uh while we need some of that expertise on our own committee, I don't think we need to figure that we're gonna be depending upon a construction person on our committee to to handle the construction. He will be probably the person who watches over the construction at as it's being taken place as well as the fact of a design firm uh who will all of their work will pretty much be done in advance while there will still be some trailing off as they, as 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 the building is actually constructed. And one thing I I I do remember, uh Brooke, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but um when we talk of design and size and and accoutrements and bells and whistles and all of that good stuff, um MSBA does have uh off-the-shelf basic concepts of what a high school should be, doesn't it? So I mean, that that is there as a res- as a resource to us, as well as these professional firms that we will contract with, we will be paying money for their expertise. So uh while we have, need need to have that expertise on the committee, I strongly feel that uh we will, I I know that we will be turning a lot of the responsibility of that over to people who are gonna be paying uh mucho dinero for uh their expertise as we, as this project moves along. So and I I like the idea of uh Rich's uh idea of um equity. Four-three-four, that's the way it works in the school committee. That's the way it should work on the on the building committee. And one other expert we may want to have is someone involved with real estate because we may decide to move the high school out of Bolton. And there are other locations that we may want to look at, and we may want, need a a real estate person involved in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Now, in terms of size, what do you think of that ballpark of fifteen to not exceed twenty-five?
I think in the twenty-five is too high. I like Joe's idea of fifteen to nineteen.
Okay. Um Sharon? Size? You have to unmute.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I think fifteen is a fair minimum. Um I'm, I'm more inclined to go a little bit higher, that you know, up into the low twenties, simply because there's a six or seven spots right off the bat that are uh automatically filled with um school people. And so that immediately takes up, if if we are, you know, if we're looking at fifteen to nineteen and already seven of them are taken, um that doesn't leave us a whole lot of wiggle room.
Thank you. Um Mary? Size?
Well, size, um seventeen to twenty-one.
Uh Mike?
Um fifteen to twenty-five.
Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm gonna compare with my colleague, Mr. Rubinstein from Stowe, and go fifteen to nineteen.
Thank you. Um Rich?
Eleven to nineteen. Sticking with that.
I'm fine with fifteen to twenty-four, twenty-five, like you said.
Um Elaine?
I'm not picky here. I'm fine with anything between, yeah, fifteen and uh twenty-three, twenty-five. I do like the odd number idea, though.
Yep. Um Brett?
Fifteen to twenty-five.
Amy?
Uh just counting it up, I can't get it to less than sixteen, so sixteen to twenty-five and the one thing I didn't mention when I spoke before is that I I think we have to be really focused on community buy-in. I think Elaine hit on this. You know, when she first spoke, but you know, at the end of the day, you you have to get the three towns to approve the whatever project is recommended. And I I think if you skimp out on too many committee members, then you risk um losing the ability to get community buy-in along the way.
Okay, thank you. Um
Kathy, could I um, could I just ask one clarification?
Okay, yeah, no, I had to see who was talking. Go ahead. I I see.
It's Rich.
Yes, I know.
Can we clarify what we, I think the two numbers I'd wanna know about is how many people want for voting members and how many total members?
Um of of the of the 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 number that we have, you mean?
Yeah, so people are saying like fifteen to twenty-five, but for me, like eleven as a very specific, there's a reason I chose eleven.
Yeah.
And I don't, I guess I don't know why, when people are saying, oh, you know, fifteen to twenty-five, I mean, that's a great range, but I think the
Yeah, and when I, when I heard as people were talking is that um that 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 would be determined by the position, like there was a question about should an elected official vote? Should it just be the taxpayers, people who reside in the town, or should a town employee vote? So I heard it, I heard whether or not someone is a voting member related more to that than to a number. It, is that, did I capture? It is that, did I capture that correctly?
I think so, but I guess I would I would actually ask for the specificity. You know, I I would agree with Leah that they should all be taxpayers that are voted. So I have eleven parents, taxpayers from the three towns, right? Four from Lancaster, four from Stowe, three from Bolton, and they're all parents with a variety of the skills that we require. And then I have eight non-voting members, three town administrators, you know, Brooke, Todd. Um, you know, the 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 other teaching and learning person, um Rob, and uh, you know, a couple other folks. So I guess that's that's why I would draw the distinction between the two. Because the non-voting thing is the one part that really matters to me.
Okay, let me throw a wrinkle into that. One of the teachers on the committee is also a resident, a taxpayer. In that instance, would that person be a voting member?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would be one of the vote, yeah, so if uh if we decided we wanted, uh, you know, are you talking about Leah? Yeah, so if it was Leah or if it was another.
We, I'm talking, I'm talking about a teacher at the high school, Kim Early, uh lives in the district, yeah.
Where does, so if she's from, say, Bolton, she would just be the Bolton parent in my in my model.
Okay, Leah?
I was just gonna say, can we just establish who's on the committee first and then we can identify which people should hold a voting uh card? Because like you said, like, three town administrators, I don't even think is appropriate. But if you have a select person, a FinCom member and a town administrator. The first two would be voting, but the third one would not.
Okay.
And like, so I think we need to establish the composition and then identify which ones are voters.
Okay, but what about this idea that we um vote on a number? Um, an odd number, um a a minimum of fifteen and not to exceed twenty-five? Just so that we can get started. Brooke?
I'm wondering, I don't know if I would take a vote necessarily rather than come to consensus. Because once you start to map it out, you may want to make a change. And I don't know if you wanna go through the whole rigmarole of, not a technical term, of course, but of having to go through everything to rescind the vote and do a re-vote. I think I would just come to consensus because we're hearing a lot of the same numbers, quite frankly. So I think you're really close to agreement on so many things. And Rich, it's not loss, I mean, that your eleven mirrors your school committee. I I I absolutely understand what you're thinking.
Yeah. Um Mary?
So uh Rich's point is a good one, um in the four-four-three representation. However, we could take that proportion and it could be five-five-four. I mean, we could do the math on the six-six-five. Um so it wouldn't necessarily have to be eleven voting members. So it's just something to think as we're as we're looking at this. But I do agree that that is that is the proportionality in terms of the three towns. That Lancaster and Stowe um have more population than than Bolton does. Um although it'll be all three, each town will be approving this, but I don't think it's unfair to Bolton uh to do that. But I don't think we're stuck with eleven. Just something to think about.
No, that's fine. I guess, oh, just one point, Madam Chairman, if I could just say one thing, if you do go to five-five-four, that's. That's an even number of people voting and you don't want that. But I I I like where you're going with that, Mary.
So what I'd like to do is see if we have consensus about the range. We agree that it should be an odd number. It seems that the range of fifteen to twenty-five has come up. If you are in agreement that that's sort of the framework that we wanna work with when we move into a discussion about. Who will be actually on the committee, um can you just give me a thumbs up if you agree you can live with that? I see that most thumbs are up. So and Mike is voting twice. Oh, he he withdrew one of his votes. So thank you, Mike. Um so we're gonna go and Leah, yours just canceled out. So no, I think so, Brooke, that's the range we're working with. Okay. So now, let's decide how we're gonna um divvy that up. So one of the things I heard, oh, I don't know what I did. Siri was triggered on my iPad and it's writing down everything I said. Bad Siri? No. I think it's so bizarre. It's creepy, too, but anyway, um. So what I heard, let's start with um um town officials. What I heard from the notes um is that we have identified. MSBA has identified the the roles. One would be a town administrator. One would be FinCom. And Brooke, is there a select board that they recommend or are those the only two? Uh you gotta.
Those are, those are the only two. Um if you were gonna go for a select board member, then that member would go into the optional category.
Okay.
So i- if that's if that's the route that you wanted to take.
Okay.
Um and and or, I I might suggest and or, you you might wanna consider like the FinCom, maybe put two people in the FinCom. If that, because somebody else had mentioned that earlier. So you could, you could do that, too, if you wanted to.
Okay, so let's start with that. So does it, are there, does anybody want to speak? I I mean, I heard several people um speak to this, that you um. Fill them with someone from each of the towns and we have the option of doing a select board. Or two FinCom people and one TA. Does anybody want to offer another um? So if you wanna speak to that, Leah?
Um, I would actually love to to decide that last.
Okay.
See what the rest of the makeup is.
Sure.
I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Is everybody cool with doing it last?
That optional spot.
I see no objections, so we're gonna, all right. So what group do you wanna tackle next? How about the townsfolk with pertinent uh skill uh skills? Leah?
So I just wanted to end, uh say something, I think in response to something Steve was saying earlier. Um, I used to actually work in architecture and construction before I was a teacher, and my husband's an architect, so I actually know a lot about the industry. Um, the people who represent the towns who have this experience, this professional experience. Actually act as the owner's rep, which is a very important position um in the industry. These are the people who um watchdog the design professionals that were paying. And so it's very important, in my opinion, to have an architect on the committee. So that when he's looking at the design and he sees a flaw in it, he can call that to the attention of the architect before we uh break ground. And that happens all the time.
But do we not need?
Let me finish. I'll 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 call on you next, Steve. Thank you. Leah?
No, I was just saying, these people need to have like significant experience because they act as the watchdogs. On the defi- design professionals who are hiring.
Yeah.
And all of their consultants.
Okay, Steve?
Yes, my my only comment was. I called them the trade people, but the the architects, the engineers. And the design people that we're looking for in the community. You can't just have a general architect. You need an architect who's got some experience building school buildings. Because it is a specialty. And the same thing as a construction person. Well, construction is general construction, but uh the the a design person. You need a design person who will have specific school building design background to be able to. We're we're looking for people who are doing a value-added onto this committee. And if if you've got a design person who does retail stores, that's irrelevant to us. We need, we need somebody who has specific or applicable uh. Skills and backgrounds so that they can overlook, as you say, an architect. An architect who builds homes is different than an architect who will build a school. And while we will be hiring, I'm sure, a professional architectural firm. We need to have somebody who has some background in a project of this size to uh. And this kind of a a structure to really be a benefit to us.
Thank you. Um so we know that we want an architect. Um, it sounds like an architect, preferably with the kind of pertinent experience related to the project. Um, an engineer, someone who works in the construction um. Industry. I remember that for both the high school and the Hail, we had, um, I can't remember his name. I can picture him, his first name is Gary ETNL. He served on both of those school um that the building projects. And he was just, he was invaluable for the reasons that that Steve is mentioning. So um those are three specialized positions that we want to give. To us, either someone in the community or a parent with those. Um, uh, do we see those as singleton members, one architect? One engineer, one construction member, but representing a a different town? Is is that the direction we wanna go in? I see Leah nodding yes. I see Rich raises hand. Go, Rich.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, this is just me sketching this out. So I had three, I had three school committee members, I had one FinCom member from each town, one architect from each town. And then Lancaster and Stowe each have like another at-large person, which could be a school committee member, it could be a whomever, the teacher, et cetera. We may not need that many people on there. Um I I was actually part of the Pomposeticket Fire Station Community Center Building Committee. And I can tell you, there was probably, there was like a twenty-five-person committee, which was very unwieldy, by the way. And um I would say there was probably only two people there with with construction experience. Um so I guess where I'm where I'm going with this is simply, you know, we may not, we need one for every town. But we should definitely have more than one just for a competing perspective.
Thank you. Mike, is your hand up? Okay. Anyone else wanna weigh in on this? Brooke, do you wanna tell us something about the folks that have applied for this in terms of their skill set? And the towns they represent? How many uh towns represented and skill set?
So I I didn't come prepared to, you know, with curriculum, you know, with with their uh credentials and such. But I I don't think it's gonna lay out quite as neatly as you expect it would lay out. But certainly we have um people from each community that have some type of this level of experience. Uh Steve, I don't know that I saw anybody with any school building specific experience. Um so, you know, we we I'd have to go back and take a look. But you you certainly have enough to draw on for at least three, like three from, one from each community. So you would be okay with that. And it was interesting as I was watching it come through. And interestingly enough, too, I also got one in from a Realtor as well, and I also got one in from a financier. Who I thought might be very valuable as well um to have it. The technology, Steve, I I hear what you're saying about the technology. I think, Mike, you'd mentioned this, too. Um, there there will be a a component that 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 MSBA brings to the table as well. So we don't necessarily have to have that. Uh not a bad idea, though. So um, yeah, I I I didn't come prepared to say here's how many or this is it. But you certainly have more than enough for one or two per community.
Other thoughts, ideas from the committee at this point? Mike?
Um, so earlier, Rich. I guess compared to Rich, my numbers were on the higher end. I think I said fifteen to twenty-five. Um, I really like the, you know, we've been talking a lot about um including taxpayers with. Specialty backgrounds and skill sets, um and I I certainly value that. I also really like the idea of having um just a parent from each town. With no particular um specialty background. But, you know, you know, there are parents who have insight as to the needs of a sped student or a high-needs student. Um, from the perspective of a parent of students who are involved in athletics or extracurriculars. Um, I like the idea of having just three uh parent members from each town as part of that. And that that would probably at least partially answer Rich's question as to why these numbers were on the higher end compared to his.
So Mike, just for clarification, you would be looking at three that have the um. Uh credentials behind architecture, engineering, building, and three general?
Correct.
All right, so.
That's about what I have, Mike.
Oh. So. I wanna, let me see, Rich, hold on. Any, oh, um, Mary?
So uh we've already hit the the six there, but I'm. Um, high school teachers. Mike, you were talking about teachers before, and I think this is the category where we'd want them. Um to be, and I certainly would like at least two, if not three, uh teachers. High school teachers.
Could we, could they be two firsts, like a teacher that also lives in one of the communities?
Well, I think that would be even better, yes. But I don't want to cut out. You know, we think about school councils and we think about that um equity. So that you have equal number of parents and um and and educators. So we don't wanna tip it one way or the other. Both are vitally important.
Okay, so let me see. Anyone else? I see your hand. Leah, just a sec. Amy, is your hand up?
I I guess, you know.
Leah, yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I I like what Mike is saying about including a parent member. From each town um with no particular expertise, but doesn't hit one of those categories. But I I just, um, I wonder if a school committee member. We're gonna have a school committee member from each town, whether that kind of gets to providing some of the feedback and representation. That Mike is advocating for without adding three more people to the committee. And um I'm always a proponent of community voice and engaging parents and students. But I I just, um, I think we have to be careful about. Making this list too long and making and taking notes for people that we need to reach out to as as part of the process. You know, maybe, I don't know how you would define them as a task force or or like bringing them in. And and to hear their voices without making them defined members of the committee.
Okay, um Leah's had her hand up. Go ahead, Leah.
Sorry, I got buried in all my windows. Um, so I um am a very visual learner. And I'm really struggling um in this format to understand like where we are. It would really be helpful if we could identify all of the people who are non-negotiable. And just say like, want, like, I could just, I could hand-type a spreadsheet right now if you let me share my screen. And I can just take like a visual note for all of us, like a chalkboard almost.
Yeah, that's all I I know. It's just if I'm moderating, it's hard to see, but um, yeah, the um.
I'm just having a, I'm having a hard time. I don't know where we are. I don't know what our possibilities are. Like, I'm looking at a couple of Brooke's spreadsheets, and I can see that there are like seven positions that are mandatory.
Yep.
And then a school committee member, minimum of one. Well, if we say three school committee members, then that feels like that's now ten. Then we have the, right, like, can we start building like um?
Sure.
That we can see.
So I would recommend, if you have printed it out, the option one um spreadsheet. Does everybody, did anybody print it out or not so much?
I I would still empty all the boxes if that's what you're doing, Leah, and then start start to fill them in.
Brooke, Pat is the only one for that box.
Right.
Chief uh executive officer, that's you.
Right.
Um, so then you have administrator or manager, I think.
That's a, that's a.
One, one person, school committee member, I think we said three.
We have three that that can fill slots here.
Yep. And then, Brooke, you're in here twice.
That's because it it that's just typical for a school district for for the CEO and the superintendent of schools.
Right, so that's like, can't sit out, like one, okay. And then um Rob is the facilities director, we need him.
Right.
Um representative of office authorized by law to construct.
School committee member.
That's a school committee member. Okay, so that's one. Then Steve Calmaine is one, or the principal. We have two teachers, one of whom, I think she lives in Lancaster, Kim Early. Was also meets the box for member knowledgeable in educational mission, et cetera.
Martin, we've got the two.
Oh, no, no, but does she live in the town or not?
Oh, yes.
She does?
Mark, no, no, not, not Martina Kim. Yes, Kim does.
Cause that would have been a twofer. Um, local budget official, official, official TBA. Members of the community with, um, the, the credentialing that we talked about. So that would be three at least. And then the optional category where we could put the three parents. The three.
Additional parents and the other school committee member.
Another school committee member. How, how many do we have, Leah?
I have seventeen.
That's, so we're in our ballpark there. Uh, Rich?
So, just to make this a little more manageable.
Yep.
If it was, if it was, if I was running this process, I would identify how many voting positions we want and put the roles in the voting positions. Or do the role, the voting roles and that'll, and then we can, doesn't matter how many non-voting positions we have, right? We want to know, in my opinion, who are the people that we want to be voting? To me, that's really the only thing that I really care about. Uh, you know, who, who else is in a non-voting role? To me, it doesn't, isn't as important.
Okay, voting and non-voting. Alright, let me hear from Amy and then you'll tackle that one. Amy?
Um, I'm kinda with Leah where I'd be, it'd be helpful for me to actually see the, the list that we're building.
I think Leah is working on something. Are you working on something over there, Leah?
I can work it up, yep.
Okay, she's, I can see it in her glasses. She's, she's on the job.
You have it, but because I, you know, um, in the category for chief, local chief executive officer, um, you know, it looks like it could be one or two people. Because you've, Dr. Todd McGuire is listed there and he's also.
Yeah, it's a designee.
Oh, I see. Okay, so that is, I don't think that is two, but it's.
No.
Yeah, it's really one person, Amy, but it's in there twice, but it's just one person. It's two roles, one person.
Well, there's two people listed in one role.
Right, no, Amy, you, you are on the right track with me, yeah. It, it, Todd is the de- designee. If I can't be there, he will be there. Because he's doing work, kind of like the subcommittee work that we were talking about earlier. He's, he's doing some of that work right now as well.
Okay.
And then I also think there's some ambiguity around the school committee members. Because if you put three people in the category for school committee member, is one of those three going to be the representative of office authorized by law to construct the school building? Are we talking about a fourth person?
So no, three school committee members total, and there are three of you that have, have expressed interest. A fourth has, but that fourth has acquiesced to, uh, the, um, other member. So, and that you would have one from each community o- on there. And so one would go in the school committee member, um, block. A fourth, uh, in the matrix. And then where it says, um, representative of office authorized by law, that another school committee member can go there. So that's your second school committee member. And then your third school committee member would go under the optional. So that's, those are the places where your three school committee members would go.
Okay.
Kathy, could I, could I ask a point of order from, okay, sorry.
Please. Amy, are you all set? Okay, let me just check, Rich, to see if anybody else wants to weigh in on where we're at. Okay, Rich?
Just to clarify, you know, we, we can have all of these other people, Brooke, Todd, all the town administrators if we want or not. Those, all those people can be non-voting people, Pat, non-voting person, correct?
Right, right.
So to me, let's just determine the number of people we want to vote.
Right, and that's next on my list.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll shut up now.
I know you're excited that we can get there. Uh, no, but that was, that would be my next question to folks. In terms of voting versus non-voting, it sounds like, um, people feel that, um, employees of the district, unless they reside in the town, should not vote. Is that a fair assessment? Thumbs up if that's a fair assessment. People who work for the district but do not live in the town should not vote. So I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Those of you who do not have a thumb up, what is, what are your thoughts? Joseph?
Uh, my thoughts are, Madam Chairman, that, that anybody that's in this committee should have a vote. I think that they, uh, they have that power of the vote, they're going to be more invested in this project than, than I think they would be if they didn't have a vote. I'd also like to point out that in my own experience on this committee, um, the negotiation subcommittee worked, uh, we made the, the liaison from the town administrator as part of our committee. And, uh, I, I found that to be very valuable. And I felt that, uh, you know, in, in working with Mr. Lowe, I felt that he had a felt had a piece of what we were doing, some ownership there. And I actually found a lot of his, uh, input to be valuable. So I, I would be more inclined to see that every member of the committee have a vote and that they feel they have some ownership in this project.
Okay. Does anybody else want to weigh in on the, Sharon?
I agree. Piece in the committee, um, by having the voting or the ability to vote. I also think that we are working hard to keep this a tight, tight, uh, committee that's not too big. So that also, um, leads me to think everybody should have a vote. But I think another piece of it is, is that the people who are working in the building or in, uh, the district, for the district, have a real insider viewpoint, uh, to what ha- what's happening in the building on a day-to-day basis, basis, and what those teachers and kids are needing, that people who are not there do not have. And I think that that's a really, really valuable insight, um, when you are there on a, a day-to-day basis. And you know what works and what's not working.
Okay. Anyone, let me, let me just check with the rest of the committee and then you, Brooke. Um, so we've been talking about the voting versus non-voting people. And there are clearly some folks who feel that, uh, residents on the committee should have vote and non-residents should not. Um, and then we just heard, um, um, Joseph and Sharon speak to, um, advocacy for everyone. If you're on this committee, you get a vote. Does anyone, before I call on Brooke, want to speak to either side of that? Oh, Elaine?
Um, I, I actually think Joseph and Sharon just won me over. Um, cause those, there's both really good arguments on both sides of that. Um, the other thing I was thinking, and I know we'll talk about town officials later. But if we're talking about three town positions, one, a town manager, a FinCom, a select board, or some combination of those three. Um, I think it would be odd to tell your town manager they couldn't have a vote if they don't live in the town. Because they're in that role specifically because they're representing that town. So I think, um, if we were gonna have to break that rule for them anyway, then we should break the rule for other reasons as well. So all of that combined, I think, just, uh, put me over to, uh, more in agreement with Joseph and Sharon.
Okay. Um, anyone else want to weigh in? Rich, I, did you, is it?
Uh, I just wanted to say, you know, one of the most active members on the, the ten million dollar building committee to do the, uh, the fire station was a non-voting member. So I don't think having a vote necessarily, you know, this is a person that drove to like five different fire stations all over New Hampshire and Massachusetts and interviewed people. So I don't necessarily think it matters. I, I just, I, if I, if they're gonna, if somebody's voting to raise my taxes, I, I want them to have a stake in the town. And I, I would say in particular, I wouldn't want a town administrator having a voting, uh, member on them. That, that would give them, they, they're, their boss is the selectman and, you know, I, I, I would like, um, only town people, uh, you know, that are gonna be here for the long haul and it's gonna affect their tax rates to vote, so.
Thank you. Alright, Leah, are you good? Mary?
So I just want to go back to, um, Joseph gave a, a, a really good example of negotiation, uh, subcommittee and how helpful, uh, Don Lowe was, and he was very valuable. But I might be wrong, but I don't think he had, he wasn't a voting member. Um, it, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't believe that he had a vote. He would say how he tended and what he would be thinking, but I don't believe he had a vote. So I would go along with Rich, especially in the facilitation of this group. Um, that it would be very, made very clear to everyone that people who are investor, people who are on this, that everyone's opinion will be heard and, um, and valued. And, uh, Rich gave the example of, of one person who wasn't a voting member. But I think it is important to come down to the voting members, um, being residents of the town. And that's not to say that the, you know, that there won't be decisions that wouldn't have to come to a vote, that could be consensus, et cetera. So I don't think it devalues, uh, any, anyone on there. And I, and again, I go back to Joseph's example. Don was invaluable to us, um, but I don't believe he had a vote, so.
Brooke, I'm sorry to keep you waiting, but go ahead.
I, I actually, Mary, I believe that he could have a vote, to be honest with you. I, I believe that that, I, I would have to go back and take a look at the, uh, the rights around that, but I believe that he, he could come in and, uh, um, be a voting member at the, the, the large group. So I would do a quick check, and Marie, you might even remember that, um, more so than I, but I, I would have to go back and do a quick check on that. I, if I might just put this notion forward, if you take a look at your voting members, if you have three school committees, three school committee members on there, like we'd said, you had three members of your community representing, you know, the members of the arch, with the architectural engineering and so, then now you're up to six. You have the one member knowledgeable and educational mission and function of facility. And if, and if we leave somebody like, like Kim Early or someone like that on there, then you're gonna have somebody that lives in the community. So that would be seven voting members. If, if you were following that, I'm not following, by the way, um, Sharon or Joseph's, uh, or Elaine's thinking, just out there general. Then i- if you had one local FinCom member, that would be somebody from your local. And if you were to follow, uh, I think Mike and Amy had said the notion of like one, um, town administrator, one FinCom member, one board of selectmen member, then you would be at nine for voting members. And so you, you would be at your odd number. So I'm just putting that out there as, as a larger, larger thought that, you know, you could, you could do that and you would be right at nine. Uh, so that, that's not Joseph's or Sharon's or Elaine's thinking, that's just, just sketching it through.
Okay. Point of order, Chairwoman?
Sure.
Do you want me to share this? Like, basically what Brooke was just ta- saying, I, I have like a makeshift spreadsheet that I could share.
Sure, can I, I, I would like to make a point, and I'd like to see that, and then I'll work out whatever I can for our little Hollywood square thing going on here. Um, I know that, um, all of the, um, town administrators have, um, experience with building projects. I know that the town administrator in Stowe was the director of finance in, um, Penn Tucket. And so I see her as kind of a twofer. Um, I'm not sure what, in, in, in FinCom, et cetera. I'm not sure what the purpose would be of having a select board member, not to disparage anybody or anything like that. But we're looking for, uh, someone mentioned value added. So would there be a certain, I don't know, criteria that we're looking for? Because that's a, a spot. And, you know, when we say parity among the towns, I think for me, I want to make sure that it's equal. I'm not, I, I don't, doesn't bother me if the towns are equal across the board, um, in terms of, of membership, just because of the way this, this committee is apportioned. Um, and I never thought about it in any other way. Um, so I just throw that out there. Because I want to make sure that, um, it makes sense to bring on, I would say, the parents, as Mike mentioned. Um, but just what, uh, what skill set are we looking for? If we bring on, um, a select board member. So that, that's my, my question. Um, we're gonna get you, Leah, hang on. Um, Brooke?
I would just, I, I'm going back after what Amy had said early, which I think really resonated with me. When I take a look at the three members um, who have expressed interest, that would like to sit as three school committee members who have expressed interest. They, it pretty much fills, fulfills exactly what Mike Porch was saying earlier about, you know, the different categories of parents that you'd be looking for. And I think that your three school committee members would actually end up filling all of that.
Okay, alright. Leah, are you ready to go? Alright, but what does Leah have? Oh, look at you. Okay. Alright, let me get my little Hollywood squares up here. And scoot it over.
Alright, this is acting kind, kind of like.
Leah, thanks for.
A chalkboard.
Making the point, yes.
Uh, you, you tell me what to do and I can move it around.
Alright, so, um, I would say if you put three design professionals, then just as a placeholder, the, the town initial S L B next to them, I, I, I was gonna point, but you can't see me pointing at this. Um, under, uh, Kim's name, uh, no, no. You have the does, design professional, it's us. Ten, yeah. And so if you go to the, um, yes. So under each of those, I would designate the initial of a town, so we know that we want one from each town. Is that correct? Or am I thinking incorrectly? Okay, so then, um, FinCom, we need two FinComs or one FinCom?
You need one.
Alright, so just put, um, we need one person there, TA one. And then in the optional category, we've got a bunch of people. So who goes into the optional?
Well, right now, if you're going to have three school committee members, you could put one of those in, in, uh, under the optional and/or. You could also, but to, in all honesty, you could also put just the two right in your school committee um, section that you've got there, and number five. You could actually put two names right there, quite frankly, not put an optional.
We had one for the rep of office, we wanted a.
We do. There's also one that has to go for the law. Yeah, I don't, is that on there?
Rep of office, is that it? Hang on.
I hope you've got the representative of office.
Representative of office authorized, yeah. So I would put a school committee meet, meeting, a school committee there.
Under there.
SC. And then SC is of course, SC. Well, we only need one of those.
But you can't, you can put two right there, Kathy, quite frankly. You can put two in that slot.
Alright, sure. So SC, SC. Um, Rob, TA, school committee. Alright, so we got those. We got the rep of office, school committee, FinCom, question mark, question mark. And then the, alright, I'm gonna shut up and other people can give her things to, give Leah things to plug in. What are our thoughts? We've got the pertinent experience people, FinCom, um.
Why don't you, why don't you put in, uh, 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 first of all, under T, under TA, put in, put in, um, just for the hell of it, Lancaster. And, and under school committee, put SC and SC in the two, in column C and D, would just fill that in rather than with question marks.
Cause we know, yeah.
You see, and SC, okay. And, uh, under FinCom, put in, uh, Stowe. No, under FinCom.
Oh, no, she just put that was SC.
Yeah, I just, I just said, so if we have three school committee members.
You just threw them in there, yeah, that's fine.
And FinCom, what do you want me to do?
I have to put, put in Stowe.
And so we're missing a bulletin leader.
So that would have to be, now we're down to optional.
Correct. Correct.
So, but to my question again, are we better off putting another, uh, either a TA or FinCom member from a town in as opposed to a member of the select board? I'm not sure. I'm only, I'm, I'm thinking, unless someone emerges as having pertinent experience. I don't know. What it, what are folks thinking?
I, I would rather see another FinCom, because this is, this is the financial side of it all.
Okay, Mike?
I, I don't, I don't know if I know what the role should be, but this is where I really like the flexibility of having that optional category.
Yeah.
To complete, you know, the equity between the three prongs.
Sure.
Well, I, I, and this model, not that this is set in stone by any stretch of the imagination, but you've got a Stowe representative from FinCom. You've got, um, A TA from Lancaster and then you'd have to have. You know, that that optional would have to be fulfilled by some member of the Bolton community. So that's where I really like the flexibility of the optional category.
Okay.
But keep in mind, you only have thirteen so far, if you take the optional away. You you have thirteen people. Identified or positions, and so optional could have. Seven people or three people.
I think Mike suggested three town citizens or parents. You know, one from each town, which would be fine.
Brooke?
You may have enough, again, to bolster the engineering, architecture, finance, or what have you. In in that category, yes, that that category there to have two from each community potentially.
We're getting bigger too.
Thirteen, we set our our range at a minimum of fifteen and a maximum of. Around twenty-five, I don't think we need to make it to twenty-five, but we're just playing with this right now. Amy?
Yeah, I think we're missing the principal from this list.
Oh, yes. Leah? Thanks, thanks, Amy.
And are we missing? Member knowledgeable and education mission and function of facility?
No, that's. Martina.
Okay, I see it there.
Are they there?
Yes.
Kim and Kim and Martina, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to hear from other members who have been through this experience or in terms of. Whether it's. They think it's better to have, I've heard Steve say it, but. In terms of parity from the town governments, whether he thinks, whether people think it's better to have a. Bolton finance. Person versus a selectman versus letting somebody with expertise from in this area from Bolton.
Thanks, Amy, I'm gonna recognize Elaine, who's had her hand up.
Yeah, so actually, to that point, I was gonna say two things, one is about this. The cell that says Bolton leader now. The one thing I will say about a select board member, and I I don't mean to paint them with a broad brush, but. Many of them do not have children, are not parents, and that is a constituency here, people that do not have a. Child or personal stake in the school system directly. That will need to be addressed by the time we get to town meeting. And the other thing I was gonna say is I did really like the idea of a facilitator. If it's possible to even get one, now that I do think could be non-voting. It would be an exception to basically everything we talked about already, but that's another potential one to put on there.
Can I add that, that when we, once we know what the committee is, then we have to really. Determine how the committee is going to function. We don't have to do that tonight. And the moderator could be part of that, because the moderator would not, would be serving a function with the committee. But would not be giving input or feedback or or voting, so that could be part of the. Organizational structure of the committee once we get there. Okay. Mary and then Mike.
Mike was before me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
I'll talk quickly.
Sorry, Mike, I tried.
Teachers, you know, when we do optional, 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 I don't see the teachers in in there and I don't see. Parents. Why don't we have them in there? Cause we're not at fourteen, we have, we want teachers, I mean, I don't think I'm alone in this.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, are you all set, Mary? Mary, all set? Okay, Mike?
So I was gonna, so two things, the first thing was actually what Mary was gonna say, I think. If we can get a sense of how in favor the committee is in including. For lack of a better phrase, like non-specialty parents. If that's the case, I wonder if we can fill in these cells with like parent, 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 so that we can see if there are three parents. And then I was wondering if, just to Rich's point. At this point, could we, and I know, Leah, I'm asking you to flex your Excel muscles. Could you highlight the cells that represent? Members who we are sure what we want to be voting members? So that we can kind of keep a tally of that.
Okay, I'd I'd like to add something before I forget. We had, and I know Leah was part of that group that was gonna go to San Diego. And I know that we had. A teacher and I think a FinCom member that was part of that. Part of that, their mission was to go and learn about these, that, you know, the the. The programming of the schools out there, and I'm wondering if we want to reach out to those folks to be on this committee. I'm just throwing it out there, because I know. One of the teachers is also a resident and with a child in the school, I think. And then I think the same is true for the FinCom member. So I'm just throwing it out as a suggestion in the in the other, other, other. Box. Rich?
I just had a comment. Steve had mentioned that, you know, we should have FinCom members because they'll have financial experience, but. In every one of these towns, the finance committees is actually, they're actually misnamed, they're really advisory committees. So they take a vote on non-financial things as well, in fact. I would say the vast majority don't have somebody financial on them or would not be financially led, so. I could tell you Chris Buck, if we decide to ask him to do this, like, like. You know, he has an MBA, but he's also engineer. Assume, because you invite a FinCom member and that that they would be a financial expert, they're probably more of like a. School committee member level experience with municipal finance.
Okay, thank you. All right, so where are we at? Okay, so do we wanna put some more people in the optional columns? Yes, so. There are, how many left? Did we say seven? So we have a Bolton leader. And then. A a teacher who's, yeah, Leah, go ahead, oh, you're just counting.
I just wanted to say that of the ones that we have identified, it's total is fourteen. So depending on how big you guys want to go, you can fill all of these in.
Okay. Thoughts? For the optional?
Parents.
Amy, use your hand up.
Didn't we talk about the need for a technology? Somebody, you know, an expert in technology?
Steve mentioned it and I think Brooke spoke to that.
That's a consultant, right?
I'm sorry?
We'll have a consultant for that.
You know, once you, once you work with these architectural firms, they have all these departments. And we also have our own IT department. And so I guess for me, I'm not as worried about it. I I like, like I said, I want to make sure that the our. Whole child educational program is factored into the design of this building. That's, that would be my priority, so. Okay, so. Another teacher who's also a parent, or Brooke, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, I I think what you could do is we could do outreach to the high school. And and you're absolutely right, we've got another teacher. Who is a parent in the community as well, that's going on that San Diego trip. You could maybe add one or two teachers and one or two parents, I mean, you could, you could play with that to. Category.
Okay. So. You want, oh, all right, let me see, Sharon, go ahead. And then like.
I'm wondering, do you have? Teachers that are parents or vice versa, parents that are teachers that have shown an interest, because then you get a twofer.
Okay, yeah, and I think we want to go with the two firsts. So that's a possibility. So other than teachers who are also parents or parents who are also teachers. What other categories do we want to put in there?
Or is that all, does that, does that pull it all together?
Raise your hand, please, so I can call on people.
I don't know if you can see it.
I can't see your hand, I didn't just see the box that says Steve Rubenstein, what what do you want to say?
Okay, what I wanted to say was. One of the categories that someone brought up recently, which I think is an important category. Is someone who, a a a citizen of the town who does not have children in the school. Because that's a constituency that we're gonna have to convince. Hundred and fifty million dollar school or whatever it's gonna be.
That is, yes, okay, and Rich?
Just building on, on Steve's point, there's more. Voters in Stowe and likely in Lancaster and Bolton that don't have kids than do have kids.
Yeah, no, I think it's a point that's well taken. So it sounds like, go ahead, Mike.
Brooke, I don't know if you can answer this question off the top of your head, but. I assume that when we're talking about teachers who are also parents, we're talking about. High school teachers.
Yes.
And I'm wondering, how many teachers do we have at the high school that are also residents in the towns?
Actually, a number, you know, I don't think that, I think that if I put something out more to say who would have interest, I think I would get. You know, an easy two to four of folks immediately who I think would have interest. And and I think it would be very good to serve on this committee, quite frankly.
Okay, all right, let me see, so in the optional, we have a a Bolton leader. And then we want, how many spots are left? Six? With question marks, Leah, I can't see, you guys are in the way, no offense.
So it's totally up to you guys, the question marks are now not representative of slots, but just.
Okay, I'm wondering if, because then we have to balance everything by town and have some equity by town. So I'm gonna let Brooke work on that, but I'm wondering. If we want more than one community member without children in the school? And then fill in with. High school teachers who are residents or residents who may be a high school teacher elsewhere, Amy, was your hand up?
I'm wondering what role, how we can incorporate a student. I don't know if if we're we're talking about an elected representative. I just, you know, I I'm trying to be practical as well, I don't know how. How to incorporate it, but I do think it's important to hear from the student.
I'm 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 gonna just say, I think if we're gonna incorporate a a student onto it, we're looking at this point at a fourth or fifth grader. Given the trajectory of this, so they can grow into the position, so. They can always come in on an advisory, and I think there will be focus groups with high school kids. But we're, we're, we don't know what the trajectory is at this point, but I I think that having. Student voice recognized is is gonna be important when we get to the point where. You know, when you get into the design phase or the feasibility study, they're gonna present us with designs. And that's when you get a lot of input, Brooke, what were you gonna say?
That's exactly what I was gonna say, I think that you'll find that there are opportunities after, I don't think this is a committee vote for it.
Okay. So Leah is hard at work here.
Okay, so I'm just trying to do like balancing of the town too.
Sure, and we can do, I mean, Brooke can, we can put Brooke in charge of that. But do we wanna, so we're at fourteen right now, is that correct? And so. If we, and we want to keep it odd, correct?
Well, the voting members need to be.
The voting members, all right, are we at a point where, I'm sorry, Brooke, go ahead.
I was gonna say, depends, I mean, for example, if I was to, you know, put this, you know. Inquiry out to our teachers tomorrow, I mean, I may get somebody, depending depending on what community they're living in, do you know what I mean? Could alter things, so I almost feel like you've got. The bones of something really good here now, and now we need to kind of start to put the flesh onto it, that's not a good analogy.
Halloweeny, okay. So do, do we want to make a decision about voting versus non-voting members? And is that something we want to do by consensus, or do we want to get into the whole motion phase?
Yes.
Yes, what?
Yes, I mean, the most critical thing to me is identifying who's gonna be voting, so.
Okay, but do we just want to do it by consensus, or do you want to make a motion?
I think we can do it by consensus, and then if it gets like, you know, contentious, we can go to a vote.
Okay. Yeah. All right, Leah?
I was just gonna say, again, I said this earlier, I'm sorry to repeat myself, but I feel better, I would feel better deciding who's voting. When the whole committee, when the committee is whole. I don't want to necessarily say like, so like in one of the towns, the only non-voter was Pat. And everybody else votes, like we could, you could splice it and you could say like. Well, maybe the town administrator will vote because the composition makes it acceptable.
Um, Brooke?
That's exactly what I was thinking too, I almost feel like I need to bring back another. Iteration now to you to, now the vote for, that's important for us. And Rich is right, I mean, we need to know who's voting and non-voting, and we need to know what the composition is of this with names attached to it. I need a vote on that to submit to MSBA, so I mean, I I see, you know, next steps now, now that I I think I have an idea. I mean, non-parent, I have to think on ways that we can get the message out to our communities that we're looking for, you know, maybe one or two non-parents. Maybe one or two teachers, so I think, I think next steps now have to be to me to go back and start to to finesse this and fill in names.
Mary?
And I'm leery of having names and then deciding who will be voting versus non-voting, because we certainly. That we were discriminating in any way, so.
Good thinking, good thinking, Mary.
Possibly can tonight decide on which at this point, look, you know, and that could change a little bit. But I think Rich would be happy and we would be doing the right. Certain roles, not that we look at the people and then we think, nah, I don't think I want him or her voting. Which we would never do anyway, but what if it could seem that way, we don't want that.
No, that's a good point, and I think we're just using things as placeholders right now, except for people like Pat, Brooke, Todd. And and Rob, because we know that. They're the players, Mike?
Just to be clear. Leah, thank you for giving those little tallies on the left-hand side, but. The 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 towns that represent some of those positions are indeed placeholders, right?
Oh, yeah, we haven't, this is what Brooke has to do, so we haven't, we're just making, we're just. Seeing how much parity we have.
Right, no, I guess what I'm saying is that. If those, if those designations change, and that means the numbers on the left-hand side could change. As long as everyone's clear about that, those three, three, four numbers, those could change depending how, how we distribute representation.
So are you saying, I I guess I, what I, are you saying that the representation should be. Equivalent to the way we're divided up on the school committee or?
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is I don't want members, school committee members, to look at these numbers on the left-hand side and think of those as hard and fast numbers, because. You know.
Change, okay.
Right, because our TA might be from Stowe or might be from Bolton, right, so.
Yeah, okay, no, I think that's understood, Brooke, Brooke, did you have your hand up?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, I think that was Amy then, go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, is it possible to just build this list out a little bit more to get to our range of between fourteen and twenty-five and just. Throw, so we can at least define these optional. You know, like to, like, like Leah's starting to do, she's two teachers, two parents. Two non-parents, or maybe that number is three, three and three. To see.
If we add up the optional people, Leah, how many, we're beyond fourteen, correct?
Right.
So if you add in all our optional people, what are we up to?
You're twenty.
Okay. Which is sort of, we want it to be odd, but we're, we're in that, yeah. Which is sort of, we want it to be odd, but we're, we're in that. Yeah, um, Sharon, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you can find one more non-parent. Then that gets a little bit more representation from the population that does not have children. And brings us to an odd number.
Thanks, okay, yeah, Amy?
I think that you might be counting the Bolton leader twice, unless I'm wrong.
I actually counted the Bolton leader over here in the town counts, but I hadn't yet counted the Bolton leader right here. So in the optional category, I have one, two, three, four, five, six.
So.
Do you want me to add another?
Yeah, a non-parent community member, as Sharon suggested, I would think.
I see, Leah, okay, thank you for explaining this.
Okay, so we're in our range, in our ballpark. Um, so this is a slate. The other question I wanna put out there is how the decision is made. About the coveted um town officials' positions. Um, because we, you know, I I think the committee was fairly um. Close to, everyone felt that um, we wanted it to be proportional. Um, and that the desire that we heard at Trittown of three, three, and three. Just brought us out of whack, but in terms of making the decision. Um, Brooke, what are your thoughts about about how that's gonna?
Well, I, you know, we, you know, we did think um. First, uh, about the notion of um, the uh, somebody from Bolton for the FinCom because. Uh, you know, we do have an individual there that is gonna travel to San Diego, but um, it. At that moment in time, there wasn't that interest in it, and so when we approached um, Stowe. I very quick to respond and say, yes, you know, we we'd, and again, somebody who has children in the school. That young age, and so really fits the bill very well. Um, so, you know, um. It it's up to you how you want to do it. Each of the town administrators has sat on s- on building committees before. Um, in fact, I I think they've all sat on school building committees before, so I think that they each have that. Um, you know, uh, uh, to to their credit. Um, you know, we do have a a board of selectmen member who has expressed interest um. From um Bolton uh with regards to s- uh sitting in the optional column. So that's out there a- as well for your consideration. And remember that you ultimately will be voting on the full slate with names attached, so I I just wanna put that out there too.
Okay, um, Sharon?
It appears that, or it sounds like, I should say, that um. Many of the people that are in the other categories, like the FinCom and design professionals. Um, and even perhaps the. Some of the school committee members that will be on this, in this group are parents. So we have parents well represented.
Yeah.
Um, maybe. A way to show equity is to include all of the TAs on the committee. And so we have a FinCom member that says from Stowe. It's a, it's a, it's a designation as a FinCom member, but it's a parent in the community, and then we still have. You you know, equal equality across the three towns by having the three town administrators involved. Just a thought.
Anyone want to weigh in on that, Leah? Leah?
So it seemed to me that it would be appropriate, because we have three and three, uh, three towns and three positions, that. We would have one select board representative, one FinCom representative, and one town administrator. And um, I actually like the idea of three school committee members, considering it's within our purview, so. That would give you six elected representatives. Who are technically answering to the entire community, not just parents. But I don't know that I would be um willing to provide three seats to town administrators. Um, considering. I actually don't know where any of them live, but um, is, you know, i- if they're not living in the three towns especially. Because that seems to heavily weight it in that direction, and I wouldn't wanna do that.
Joseph?
Thank you, ma'am, Sharon. Um, to what Ms. Vire was saying, I can say that at least two of them I know do not live in the district, but. What I want to ask the superintendent was that in her conversations with with the town administrators. Have they all three expressed a desire to be on the building committee?
Yes, all three in some way or another have expressed interest.
Thank you, so much, no, thank you.
Rich, your hand was up?
Yeah, so I would say we need a budget person from each town on the committee, so my sense is invite all three. Um, town administrators to join the committee, but just give them a non-voting role. Done and done.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Steve?
Uh, I I I like the idea of having elected people. And not appointed people. None of the town administrators are elected by anyone except the Board of Selectmen, and that's a rather narrow. Uh, elect electoral base for any of them to have. So I I would think, I like the idea of one FinCom. One town administrator, and really, I would like one Board of Select. Select persons uh member to be on this committee. Uh, I I I think it just breaks it up nicely. I I don't understand why we need to have three TAs. None of whom are elected by anybody except the Boards of Selectmen. And uh, you know, we, why don't, why don't we just, why don't we just have one of the chiefs of police as well? I I, you know, it just, it.
No, let's, let's just keep it to what we have.
No, 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 I I just, I just threw that out as a uh, as as a joke. Um, but I I think that's uh, I I think we're breaking it up nicely, actually. Um, Stowe needs another person on the board to to balance it out in the four, three, four uh balance, if we're gonna do that.
Okay.
And I'll 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 volunteer to be the non-parent member, I don't care.
Okay, uh, Amy?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I'm just looking at these numbers of the the tally, and I think where the. School committee member is listed in row six, it shows somebody from Lancaster and Stowe, but the number, there's a number one under Bolton. Um.
Right, that's your total of three, Amy.
No, but that should go to Stowe, there we go, and then um. Rep of office, there we go, thank you.
Okay.
Um, regarding the town administrators and representation. Across the towns and parity, I just, I do have a concern that. Um, perception, um, will there be an issue? Between the towns if one of the town administrators is on the committee and the other two aren't? Um, particularly when. I I I'm just, I'm throwing that out there as a concern, and I don't know how we would choose one. When all three have expressed interest.
Um, okay, Mary, do you wanna speak to that?
Yes, I do wanna speak to that because I am trusting. Um, in the uh cooperation and coordination that our town administrators have. Um, that they would work together, and although one person would be on there, and that seems to make most sense. Um, to have one TA, one finance person, and one select person. Um, but that TA would be talking to um his or her. Um, other, other TAs, and we would get, in a sense, three and one. So any, any one of the three would really be good, and I think that that, that's fair. So I trust that they would, I'm hoping, Amy, and I'm trusting that they would coordinate, and we would get the best wisdom of that group.
Okay.
Madam Chair, point, point of order, or point of, whatever you wanna call it, um.
I was getting ready to call on Elaine, but now.
Please, I I I will, I will defer to Elaine.
Thank you, Elaine.
Oh, thank you. Um, so there, there's a lot of good points on this, um, and this might be a total cop-out. Um, but I was gonna say is, why don't we let the towns figure that out? So if you have three positions, one you say is a TA, one's a FinCom, and one's a Board of Selectmen. Like, the towns can figure out which is which amongst themselves, um, or if you even wanna go even broader. Say there's three budgetary roles, one from each town. The town should figure out who the best representative of their town is. Um, and that way they can say, like, they put forward who they wanted. Within, you know, the number of roles that we have available. I I know that would probably make voting on something really complicated, um, but it's just an idea to throw out there.
Thoughts? Um, Chuck, uh, Leah?
Um, I totally agree, I was thinking the same exact thing. Um, and then, once we see who those three representatives are. Then we decide who else goes into the optional category, meaning parent or non-parent, so. If Mr. Buck wants, is the one who gets the finance committee slot, then he is a parent. And so we need to find in the optional category, non-parents to balance that out. But I think that we got, we asked the three constituencies within town government to give us their person. And then we balance that out with the other optional I, um, slots.
Uh, Amy, you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that we are clear that we need to fill a town administrator slot, though, right?
In the FinCom slot, those are the the mandatory slots, and because we're a three-town region, we wanna have.
Right.
A another member of town government. You know, I was, I I would, my my thought, um. Similar to Elaine's is, and and I don't know how this works um in these towns. But they would have to collaborate in that decision-making. Um, so we would say, these are the positions we have to fill, uh, plus. An optional for a leader of whichever town doesn't take the other two. Um, make a decision and and let us know. Um, I'm, I'm cool with that, I don't know how you communicate that, but I think it's, I don't know, it's. I think that, you know, Mary had, is is um, um. I understand what you're saying, Mary, and that they, and and I'm sure that that would happen. But I also think it would be, from my point of view, giving something to the towns to say. You know, these are the three slots we have, tell us who you want, these are the parameters. Send us who you want, a- and they will have to to work it out. Um, I'm sorry, wait, so I said that, and now Mary has her hand up, and then Rich.
So I'm wondering about the timeframe of this, were we to do this, how will this fit with what Brooke needs to um.
Yeah, Brooke, go ahead.
Thank you, Mary. Um, it really was my desire to have this wrapped up by October thirty-first, that was the extension that I'd asked for. Um, you know, i- it this, this, this particular, a- and the only reason you'll recall that we'd asked for an extension was because of COVID. And trying to get everything cool together, so they are very good about granting us uh some time. When Kathy and I talked to them the other day, they said that, you know, they wanted to be sure that we felt that we would. Get it right, it's like, you know, uh, uh, if I quote MSBA. I think for us to tell them that we need a couple of more days, I think would be okay, but I think for us to stretch this. Another two to three or four weeks, I I I I don't think that that, I don't think that that's where we should go at all.
So, so it's Monday, um, and the thirty-first is Saturday. Could we ask them to have a decision for us by Friday?
Yes, can I make, can I answer that?
Sure, nobody else is ending up.
Okay, so. I don't know who we're asking who they are, I think we should say people can apply, and these are the positions that are available. And, you know, if we end up with. The, you know, the only FinCom member that applies is Chris Buck from Fin, from Stowe, then we put him in that slot. If we end up with like five FinCom members, then we do that. But it seems like a little bit like that sale, it seems like we have a slate of people that Brooke has. We probably need to act on that tonight, otherwise we're not gonna have time to do it by the thirty-first. So I would, I would encourage us to, again, I would think about the roles, I I don't, I sound like a broken record, I would think about the roles we want to be voting members. And then go from there, and cuz until we do that. You know, I I think everything else is gravy, right? I want Brooke, I want Todd, I want all these people on the committee. But I don't necessarily want them to be voting members. But maybe other people do, so we we real, that's, to me, that's the most important thing.
And when do we have to do that? Do we have to do that tonight, Brooke, decide on?
Well, you don't have to necessarily do it tonight, but what, but when I submit this to MSBA, I need names in there, and I need to know who's voting and who is not voting. So I I don't know that you need to necessarily do that tonight, but we may have to call for another pop-up meeting.
I'm having a, I, and I, you know, I I'm nuts about all of you, and this is probably some of the finest moments of my life during the pandemic, is the. Special time we've all spent together. Um, but I I feel like, I mean, how many, we have met so much, and I do appreciate. Everybody's um commitment and the time. Our next meeting is November fourth. If we can't wrap this up tonight, then I would strongly. I I would, I I would want the MSBA to know that we will have a decision on November fourth. But um, let me, let me back up, and just as a, as we had two options on the table. That um, that maybe we could uh decide right now. So voting members would have to be a resident slash taxpayer. Or um, everybody votes, so those are the two options, I think that.
Why don't I make a mo-, why don't I make a motion to that effect, and we can see if people agree on that or not?
Okay, so go ahead, make your motion.
So I move that any voting member on this committee should be a taxpayer of Stowe, Bolton, or Lancaster.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Oh, Mary, second. Okay, discussion, questions? Okay, I see none, so I am going to uh call the role, I'll start. So the question is, the the motion is that in order to vote on the building committee. Uh, a member must be a a resident and thereby a taxpayer of the town. Is that correct, Rich?
Yep.
So, uh, Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joe?
Um, I'm gonna vote no.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kathy? Oh, that's me, yes. Um, okay, so the vote is, um.
That was beautiful.
Ten to one, uh, the motion carries, so that is settled. Um, so the next um. Item is how we approach bringing a town official on to the committee. Um, Elaine and Leah have spoken to, can I finish?
I just have one put in order, could we, could Leah just pull up her spreadsheet, and she can just take anybody that's not a town, that's not a a resident? And put that in, under the optional category.
Yep, thank you. Leah grabbed a snack, look at you, ruined her.
I know, can I just tell you guys, every single meeting, my husband delivers me dinner, so whenever my mirror, my camera goes off. It's cuz my husband just sold for me dinner, but, sorry, sorry.
Fine.
Tell Anthony I'm hungry.
Husband gets chili dogs.
TMI, Steve. Um, so only tax, you're going to put voting are only people. Who would reside and be taxpayers, so that's the voting column. So that is, just put a V in the ones that would, yep. Oh, wait, no, 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 ah, 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 no. Okay, SC, uh, yep.
There you go.
Voting, um, rep of office, oh, yes, uh, one, yes. Um, yeah. And we don't know, you could do that underneath them, so. If it's a TA, the Bolton leader, then we, it might be, it might not, yeah. Teacher.
So you've got nine.
Yeah. Okay. Will that work, Brooke?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
All right.
Can I, I, can I go back? I want to make sure that I'm clear on the direction that you're looking for me to go with regards to, um, kind of goes back to Rich's question, like, who is it exactly that you're asking? You're asking me to ask to pull these last three positions together for town officials?
All right, and I'm wondering if it's you or me that does it as the chair, or if we do it jointly. Um, a joint communication saying that, uh, uh, tonight's meeting, the School Committee designated three positions on the Building Committee for, um, um, uh, for, for officials of the town, um, in, in their participation. So one is a, a, um, a TA, one is a FinCom member, and do, uh, uh, are people unanimous in their thought that we have a, um, a, a Select Board member? Is that, does anybody, that, or does it not matter?
I'm not, I don't, I don't think a Select Board member should be on it, that's just my opinion.
All right, so-
If I look at, if I look at the Center School, uh, Building Committee, there was a Select Board member on them, but they were really representing the Finance Committee.
Okay, so, all right, Sharon, did you want to make a, say something?
I just have a question. So, then, i- if we're putting it out that way, though, is one town sends a TA, one's town sends a FinCom member, and one town sends a selectman, two of those are taxpaying members of the towns.
Right.
Vote, but the TA is not, so how does that work with the rest of the numbers that we're working on?
Well, so, the TA is non-voting, the FinCom would be voting, and then the Bolton leader, if it's a Select Board, that's a voting. So, does that help?
Well, I'm just looking, I'm thinking about overall with the numbers, because two of those three people vote and one does not, so is that going to throw off our balance of number of voting members for Lancaster, number of voting members for Stowe, and no-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Bolton.
I see what you're saying. Um, Leah?
Yeah, and so that's why I think we need to know who those people are going to be, so that we can use that optional category to balance the rest out.
Okay, so then we would want to know, like,
Tomorrow.
Or Thursday, Friday type of a thing. Um. Mary?
So, um, back to Rich's idea of letting people, um, apply for this. I think the danger in that is that we could appear to be deciding, which we would be, deciding among, uh, and, and so, and I don't want to be in that position, I don't want to put Brooke in that position, or Kathy in that position, um, but-
Isn't that our role, though, Mary? Sorry to interrupt, isn't that our role, we are supposed to decide who these people?
No, well, not necessarily, I mean, these, um, most of these have come to Brooke, and then ultimately we do. But I mean, on the specific people, let's say, um, we had all three, we two, you know, three TAs, uh, three Select People, and three FinCom people, we had nine people, and we had this inside on three, that's the kind of thing, um, that I'm talking about. What I want to get back to is, uh, Brooke, we, we did have, um, you had initial interest by at least one FinCom person, um, at least one TA, and one Select Person, you already have, we have three. I mean, I love the fact of, of thinking that we could, you know, ask them to make these decisions. Everything takes a long time, this process involved, et cetera. And, um, you know, look at the time that we're spending on this right now, if we're, if it's only three, and it's still three categories, there are already three, three people. And then, in terms of, um, Sharon's question of balancing the voting part, we still have the optional, um, people who, um, many of whom will, will reside in the, in one of the three towns, and as long as we keep, you know, try to keep some proportionality, that Lancaster and, and Stowe, um, have percentage over, over Bolton, we're fine. So, it's all, it's all goodwill and all, but I, I think it, it would take too much time, and I think we really need to move forward. We, you, you don't know what this is, what the building is, the committee is, I mean, we don't know what the final project's going to be, whether it's going to be renovation, you know, talk about new school, we don't even know that yet. We need to keep going with this, with MSBA, and let, Brooke, there are other things that all of us have to concentrate on, this is vitally important, it's really exciting, we already have these, we have some people for this.
Okay, thanks, Rich.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, include all three town administrators as non-voting members on the committee.
Okay, hang on.
Or they're de, or they're designee, so if, you know, let's say Denise from Stowe decides she doesn't want to be on it, which seems unlikely, but say she does, and she wants to have somebody else, that's fine.
Um, I, all right, um, so the motion on the table is to have, um, all TAs on the Building Committee as, um, non-voting members, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is that Mike, second? Um, discussion? Leah?
I'd just like to reiterate that although they're not, um, voting mem, they wouldn't be voting members, they would still have undue influence on the committee, and their constituency would be, um, too heavily weighted, in my opinion. So I don't see the necessity of having three town administrators. I do see the necessity of having each of the town governments represented.
Okay, thank you, Elaine?
Liv, can you close the door?
Um, I just had a question, so if the town administrator, uh, has a designee that is a resident of the towns, does that automatically make that person a voting member?
Well, I wanted to, oh, I wanted to, uh, move to a, to amend the motion, Joseph, is that where I do that, or do I wait?
No, you can, you can move to amend right now.
Okay, um, I'd like to move to amend the motion to, um, exclude the, or his or her designee. Um, so the mo, the, the, the motion would be to, um, have all three TAs as non-voting members of the Building Committee.
I'll second that.
Can I just speak? Okay, could I, all right, all right.
Yeah, so we have a second, so now you can discuss, go ahead.
Yeah, so the only thing I would say is, for the designees, so say like, you know, Orlando doesn't want to go, it's sort of like with Brooke, Brooke can send Todd or herself. So, that was sort of the idea behind that, so if you want to remove the designee, that's fine. Uh, my key thing is, the requirement of the MSB, MSBA is that we have somebody that has budget control, and if you didn't know, the town administrator in every town is the Chief Financial Officer for each one of these towns. So there's pretty much nobody else that's, has more authority than they in terms of the budget. So, that's the reason that I, I'm recommending that.
Thank you, Mike, is your hand up?
Yeah, I, I, I realize, sorry, I, I realize that I, I seconded the motion. I'm wondering, for those that are potentially in support of this, what would be the added value of having all three town administrators on the committee?
I can answer that, since I made the motion.
Rich, I didn't recognize you when Amy had her hand up, so can you just wait, and then I'll come back to you, yes, Amy, go ahead.
I, I see the added benefit of that as having more buy-in from the towns into the process. Um, I mean, I, one thing I'm confused about that Kathy, I think, has brought up a few times is, do we want to have a selectman? Why is it important to define having a selectman be represented if that's not on the MSBA's matrix of people that need to be there, and so this motion kind of gets to parity among the towns. Without covering each of the positions, like, I, I'm unclear as to, I guess I'm a little confused as to why there was discussion on whether or not we need a selectman or a finance person, and I see this motion as achieving parity in the towns by incorporating the town administrators as non-voting members. So I, I think I would support it.
Sharon?
I think that by including each of the TAs, it, it provides equitability across all three towns, there, visually you can see, there's an equitability across the towns. And the town administrators, it's their job to look out for the best interest of the town that they are representing. And they do know the financial piece, they, they have a different perspective of the town. If it's a non-voting member, then the concerns about, um, the, the weight of their vote on taxes or whatever, those go away, because they're not voting. But they then report back to the town, and that also is their job. So they can then bring back the information to the various committees in each of the towns. Um, the information that they need to know to make good decisions going forward. So I think that is a, it has the potential to be a very, uh, a way to make it more streamlined by having that vehicle of, uh, information sharing.
Thank you, Brooke? Brooke, you're muted.
Then would you, then you're really getting back to do, will you do three FinCom members as well? For parity? I, I'm just talking, I'm, it's a rhetorical question, I'm, I'm not looking, I'm just suggesting.
So, so i- if I could just sort of go back to where we were. The, the goal is to have not to, when we first started the conversation, what I clearly heard from, uh, multiple members of the committee was the concern that this Building Committee not be heavily weighted with town officials, whether they be elected or appointed. And that there was a desire to stick to this, um, parity in terms of, um, the towns, and even though the MSBA asks for one town administrator and one FinCom member, the committee was willing to add a third, um, town official, um, just so that we have one from each. So I, I haven't heard anything to further, about further expanding the committee by adding more, more people on. Um, so, the question on the table is, um, adding the, um, three TAs as non-voting members. Now, I, I offered an amendment, it sounded like Rich would accept it, or do we need to vote on that? Rich?
Yeah, we need to, yeah, I just, I guess, a couple things, first, I think we should vote on it, secondly, nobody knows the budgets better than anybody that, in any of these three towns. They also are going to know how to finance it, right? So, this is going to be a big dollar item, so they're going to know how to finance it. The other thing I would mention is that Denise was on a Building Committee before, for a school, and so was, uh, Dawn, he was on the Minuteman School Building Committee. So we would have, we would get that expertise, but we would not get the, the, um, the creep that you might get, since they represent the Select Boards in each town by having them voting. So, that's the reason I support this.
No, I hear your argument, but my question had to do with not adding an additional layer, that we would still be looking at, um, um, three, three people from the town, but we are required by MSBA to have a FinCom member.
Yeah, to me, that's a little bit irrelevant right now, whether we add FinCom, more FinCom members or not, and the only thing, the, the only thing, I think we should vote on it, we want to worry about parity for FinCom members or any other position, that should be dealt in a separate vote. This is solely, let's talk about whether or not we want to vote th- three non-voting members that are, um, for, we can continue to discuss it if you want. My sense is if somebody wants to make a motion that we have three FinCom members, which frankly I would support, let's do that, but let's just get through this one vote.
Amy?
Yeah, I'm wondering if there is a creative solution here, because, um, I'm looking at Brooke's chart with the categories that are defined, and it says, in addition to Administrator or Manager, that's one category, the other ca, other category is Local Budget Official or Member of Local Finance Committee. Rich said that the town administrators are the Chief Financial Officers of the town. And if that's true, wouldn't they be able to, I mean, Brooke is, Brooke is listed in two different categories, could the town administrators fill both categories?
Brooke, could you speak to the requirement, um, regarding FinCom member? You're, you're muted, Brooke.
I would have kept it clean, I would have kept it FinCom and Town Administrator, I don't think it would have conflated the two, to be honest with you. And I, I, as much as, um, Rich, I hear exactly what you're saying, but I think that there are definitely going to be, um, implications from dealing with just this one piece on its own, because I don't think you can silo it, because it will have, um, implications or ripples throughout. So I, I understand, but I, 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 I worry about the implications, if you take this vote and then find that you, you're in a corner for some other things.
Mary?
I move that we, that we, um, you know, commence the, the vote on the amendment.
Suck it.
All right, so the amendment was to remove the term "or his or her designee" from the motion, this is not a vote on a motion, it's a vote on the amendment. So I will call the roll on the amendment. Um, Leah?
Uh, no.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve, I think has left the, oh, there he is, hi, okay, there you are. Go ahead, Steve. The amendment?
The, the amendment is to, let me get a clarification. The, the amendment is to, um, remove the ability of a TA to have a, uh, an agent represent them on the committee as opposed to themselves.
Correct.
My answer is no.
No, that you want to keep designee in there?
No, I, I, no, I want to keep that, I want to take designee out.
Okay.
So, so is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes, all right.
We need to vote yes.
Yes.
Joseph, where are we with this? The yes means you want to take designee out, no means you want to keep it in.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you, so-
This is why you make your motions in the affirmative.
Okay. So Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
No.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Can you repeat it? I'm so sorry.
The, the motion is to, um, let me see, have all three TAs as non-voting, uh, uh, all three TAs or their designee as non-voting members. The, the amendment is to remove or their designees from the motion. So a yes vote would mean we will exclude the term "designee" from the motion.
Yes, sorry, yes.
Yes, and I vote yes, so that is one, two. There are nine yeses and two no's, so the motion on the amendment carries. So now the motion on the table is to include all three TAs as non-voting members. And I had a, um, the motion was made, I think Mike Horace seconded it. So, are there any more questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call the vote, Leah?
Um, I'm gonna vote no.
Elaine?
I vote no, because I'd rather do this as a whole.
Steve?
No.
Sharon?
I'm gonna vote abstain.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
No.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Kathy, no. There are-
Did it tie?
No. I have four yays, and one, two, three, four, five, six nays, and one abstain, so the motion does not carry. Okay, so now we're back to decision-making with regard to those town positions. Um, what I- Um, what I'm hearing people say is to, um, um, entrust Brooke with making the decisions. Um, and, um, is that what, what people are inclined to do? Or do you want to entertain the notion that Elaine and Leah put forward that we ask the towns to decide either the positions that are available and they can let us know who they want to f- to fill them? So, Leah?
Um, was it your understanding that, um, the town administrator who has stepped forward that, um, Don Lo was accepting of that person being chosen? I just don't know how, um, the two people who we have in place right now were chosen, I guess.
But Brooke, you can speak to that. Brooke, please unmute.
I think we were just looking at trying to make sure that, you know, we knew that we had a board of selectmen, uh, member that was interested from Bolton. We knew we had somebody from, um, Stowe that was, is interested in the, um, uh, the Fin composition, and we knew that we had somebody from Lancaster. So it had just fit, it had just perfectly fit the bill of one from each. That's all it was.
Okay, other comments? Sharon?
Sorry, rather than going back to the drawing board at this point, we, we have something that fits the bill. Why not go with what we have?
Okay, Rich?
I, I don't know what that bill is. The only thing I know is that we have, the only thing I've heard is that we have people that are voting in different towns. So I'm gonna make another motion. Can I, I'd like to vote, um, Pat, Rob, Steve, Brooke, um, as non-voting members to the committee.
Does anybody wanna second that? I don't hear a second. So the motion does not move ahead. Okay, so, um, I don't know, Brooke, what else do we need to do tonight? Do we just have to vote to accept the slate, the, 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 um, the, the committee as we've put forward? What's the mo- what's?
So, the, the vote, the, the two votes that I need for MSBA is who is voting member and who isn't, and the actual slate. So showing who, the names and, and the email addresses, et cetera. Exactly the slate that you've seen, that has to be filled in, and I need that voted on to move it forward. So I envision probably what happens next is I'll go back now and take a look, um, you know, at the, uh, the slate and, and fill it in and email it out to you here shortly, and you can take a look at it and offer some advisement or, I, I mean, that's a, a plan that we can take. If that's the approach that you'd like to take, it's completely up to you.
I think that we need, we all, all wanna see the slate filled in. If we, if we have until the thirty-first, it sounds like something that we could do. I would prefer not to have another pop-up meeting and let them know that we have a regularly scheduled meeting on the fourth. And that's when it will be done.
I'm ve- I'm very comfortable with that, and I can let them know that, um, I, that will submit it on November fifth.
But tell them we have pop-up meeting and regular meeting fatigue, and just give them our schedule since June nineteenth as an illustration.
They'll, I think that they'll be fine with that.
Okay, if you need me to write a nice note to persuade them, just let me know.
I think we're good.
Okay, so are we ready? Yes, Rich?
I just, I just want qu- one question, and maybe that, maybe you don't, you can tell me if you don't wanna discuss it now. I, I guess I really just don't, I'll just make a comment unless anybody else wants to chime in. But having the town administrators as, um, the chief financial officers, the chief administrative officers, they basically represent where the rubber meets the road in those towns. So if you're not gonna include them on the committee, I, I, you know, I, I don't know how you're gonna get this done. I mean, they're gonna know a ton that you're gonna have to go to them for, and if they're not, if you, if you don't have them part of the committee, then I think you're really missing, um, I, I don't really frankly know how you're gonna build the building. That's all I'll say.
Um, if I can, um, uh, respond, that I've been on two building committee, um, two building committees in this region that did not have, uh, town administrators on them. Um, and the, 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 the building somehow got built. Um, it doesn't mean you're not in contact with them. There are other people that we employ, um, um, a clerk of the works, there are, uh, uh, construction managers, there are people that are on the committee. Um, and there are, um, there's one TA, and as Mary said, um, there is, that's a liaison to the other towns. And I know that everyone that works in these towns and lives in these towns is committed to, to the growth of these towns, and one way that you measure the growth of the towns is by looking at the schools. We have an incredible high school in a terrible building. We have incredible teachers in, 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 working in, in, in a, an outdated facility. And I think that's gonna carry the day, along with the work of the committee, to communicate and collaborate. And so, I mean, that would be my response. The other thing, Rich, and I, I hear your, your, your concern and your passion, but we just voted. The committee voted, and I think it's time, um, to move on. And if anybody has anything else to add, I would, um, recognize them. Leah?
I feel, um, I understand totally what Rich is saying, and I agree with you too, Kathy, but I just wanted to say for the record, I don't think that vote was seeking to exclude town administrators. Uh, what we're doing is seeking to balance the membership, and I really look forward to having the one town administrator on the committee so that they can bring that perspective in an equitable way.
Thank you, Leah, and I, I appreciate that perspective, because I think that sums it up. We have to put a building committee together. There will be other people that will be weighing in and collaborating and, you know, serving ex officio or all sorts of things. So thank you for that perspective. Um, is there anything else for this part of our agenda? Seeing none, then I think that we will, I will entertain a motion that I'm sure Elaine is ready to read, so that we can, um, adjourn this part of the meeting and, um, move into executive session. Elaine?
Sure, I move to go into the executive session at eight thirty-eight PM pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Unit A, committee will adjourn an executive session, executive session to include Superintendent Clinchy and Human Resources Director Anne Marie Stoika.
Second, please?
Second.
Okay, um, Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
That was me.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, Leah?
Yes.
Um, Rich?
Yes.
Um, Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Kathy, yes. Okay, Brett, we bid you a fond adieu, and we will see you on the fourth. Good night.